Remember back a couple of years ago as to exactly why I joined the school committee in December of 2020. Slow down for a minute and realize who the class of 23 is. The class of 23 were freshmen in March of 2020. I've got two young kids, one is in second grade at BMS. And as a parent, and sure many of you have heard it as well, I've always been told to be careful what you say and do around them, they're always watching. Though we can bet the class of 23 was watching the previous committee back then too. In addition to academics, we think of our high school years as a sort of rite of passage, a series of unique life events that prepare us to enter a general society of others. We go from being 13 or 14-year-old kids to 18-year-old young adults, ready to take on the world. And we do this through social activities like sports, performances, clubs, prom, picnic breakfasts, getting dinners, fundraisers, all sorts of other events. So I'll ask you again, who is the class of 2023? Well, they were the class who were told that they can't finish their freshman year in high school. They were the class who were told they can't start their sophomore year in the classroom. They were going to pretend that remote schools are good enough education to make use of high-grade format that no kid really understood. They're the juniors who were made to work through math mandates for maturity of their youth. Had events canceled now, and now they're seniors who have had just about every normal rite of passage that you and I take for granted stolen. Meg's email included the line, "We have made concessions for the greater good. Time for the administration and the school committee to allow us to have this day without fear of retaliation again." They sure have made their fair share of concessions for the greater good, and they've yet to know what a normal year of high school is like. Remember, we're not done with this year yet, and if you look around at some of our neighboring communities, you can probably see certain areas gearing up to ask Meg and her classmates to make even more concessions. All they ask for is the opportunity to salvage what's left of their high school years, to come together over this incredible achievement, and I think it would be terrible not to listen to them. What I hope is that we start to see this culture shift now, this week. I talk to Superintendent Zanghi and future Superintendent Costello constantly about the need to start operating as one district. About three years ago, we stopped being three individual schools and became one district. And how important it is to unify our two elementary schools around this idea. What better opportunity could there be to do that than this week? How great would it be to see team pride at all schools this week? If the administration and teachers could make it happen on such short notice? Wouldn't it be great if players could tour around the elementary schools? Talk to the young kids about what it means to be part of a team and part of a student unit? Have a pep rally, have the bands play, wear the team colors, show a highlight reel, encourage the young kids to get involved and participate in school activities, whether it be sports or anything else. Alright, so now we're going to hear from the community and the administration. The administration's going to share what they've come up with, and then we're going to discuss and vote as a committee. We're going to hear from public about this and do the numbers. I do want to ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes, but I want the committee and the administration to hear exactly what this means to you and what you think we should do this week and in the future when situations like this arise. So with that said, we'll open up a public comment session.
I have one request prior to coming to the meeting, Mr. Dave Arkand, and then there's some walk-ins that have signed in on the floor.
David?
Wait, ready for here?
Is that fine? If you can speak loud enough, or there's a microphone here, I believe it's off.
So good evening, I'm Dave Arkand from the town of Berlin. So I'm a parent of two Tohoto graduates, as well as a parent of a current player in their home football team. So I'm here tonight to make an appeal for the early release of schools on December 2nd, so everybody can attend the game that we've been referring to. But I'd ask that you consider these couple of points as you make your decision. First of all, this is special, it's unique. Maybe not once in a lifetime, but it's close. I'm not the team historian, but as far as I'm aware, these two schools, whether as individual high schools or in the combined West Boylston-Tohoto program, they've never made it this far in the history of playing football. In Massachusetts, there's 275 football teams playing this year. There's only 16 left, so we're in the final 6%, that's a pretty amazing number. These kids and this entire community will remember this experience for the rest of their lives. I'd ask that you please don't become part of that memory in the form of, "Remember when Tohoto wouldn't release school releases so everybody could go watch the game." Okay? Number two, this is a Tohoto team. Yeah, they practice at West Boylston, from the shirt says Lions, but there's a lot of Tohoto kids on this team. With all due respect to my friends over at WB, Tohoto students easily make up half the team roster. All four of the team captains, who I think, oh, over here, I think I saw them all here in the front row, are from Tohoto. 18 of the 22 starting positions on the team are Tohoto kids. The Tohoto members of this team want and need your support as they represent this entire community in this unique experience. This is your team, this is not just WB. I'll close by saying I can't pretend to know the entirety of the criteria you must consider when you're making a decision to modify the school calendar, and you cited several reasons that I wasn't aware of. What I do know is that students in the school district have the rest of their school years, college, and their careers focused on education and work. They have a single opportunity to represent their team at a state championship football game. Please do the right thing here, don't end up on the wrong side of history. And go ahead.
Is your okay? Thank you. We're both nervous. My name's Marv Le, I'm a 2003 graduate back to Tohoto. My parents are graduates at Tohoto, my husband's a teacher at Tohoto, my daughter's in preschool at Tohoto, and my daughter's in second grade at BMS. So it's in our blood to be Stax fan and against everything I know to be a Lions fan. So for you guys to know, for me to support the scene, it helps out the most at Tohoto. I emailed Mr. Zanghi and Mrs. Costello earlier this week when I first heard about the MIAA's decision to play this game at the least opportune time for anyone that works or attends this field. I was on the fence about coming to read it out loud because I've never done anything like this previously, but after speaking to my nephew Bobby Humphrey last night, I chose to come. Bobby would obviously love the support of the entire district, but feels a little strange talking back for it. I told him that I would come and read my email and let everyone know that yes, it would mean so much to him as a captain of this great team to have his classmates, teachers, and administration supporting them in the most important game of their career. I'd also like to say that regardless of the decision made tonight, my family, including my husband, the teacher at Tohoto, my daughter at Tohoto preschool, and my daughter at EES, will be taking time off school to attend. We believe this is an important community event that will create lasting memories for our family, and we also believe it will show our kids that hard work does pay off, sometimes in the form of getting to play at Gillette Stadium. And that was in my email, I'm sorry. Okay, my emails. I'm reaching out first and foremost as a supporter of the state finals West Boylston varsity football team. Secondly, I'm reaching out as a parent of their Vegas fan. This is an unprecedented time for our school district and one that I believe should be fully celebrated. Although the boys wear West Boylston on their shirts and helmets, they are at the core of the Tohoto team. They are packed with stars from Boylston and Berlin, and I believe their peers and teachers deserve the time to cheer them on as they play on the historic field at Gillette Stadium. Having grown up in Boylston and lived here my entire life, I know moments like this could potentially be once in a lifetime. If you could possibly find it in your heart to give kids and staff an early release to celebrate this momentous occasion, I believe we could do more for the district around in overall happiness than any three hours of schooling possibly could. My daughter is a second grader at EES, and regardless of your decision, she will be released early that day to watch her cousin, Vegas idol Bobby Humphrey, in his final high school game of his career. I know it would mean the world to him to have his teammates, who have worked their entire lives for this moment, to have their fans who have cheered for them at every game along the way, be able to also cheer for them when it means the most. Sports at Tohoto are doing so well recently. I think showing support for our athletes would go a long way with your goals to retain students in the district. I know West Boylston has already declared a half-day against Stax and students. Please follow their lead on this one and give these kids the respect and fanfare they have earned and truly deserve. Thanks for your thoughtful consideration on this matter.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Meg Edwards, my twin brother John has been on the team, or has been on the team for the last three years, and I've been watching him play since he was five. I'm a student here in Tohoto and a senior in the class of 2023. As you know, our peers on the Lions football team have had a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to play at Gillette. It is important to the students and faculty, as well as the community, to go and support the achievements of our football team. They have worked tremendously hard this season and deserved as many people as they possibly can supporting them. The student body, especially the class of 2023, has missed out on a lot of opportunities in the past four years or three years of high school. This is quite possibly the seniors' last opportunity to be together outside of the school, and we would appreciate the support of the administration and school committee in making this happen. I submitted a petition with over 80 signatures, and I gathered it in just one day. Thank you.
Hey guys, thanks for letting me speak. I really prepare anything, but what I can tell you is, have any of you in your high school days had a team that played in the state finals? Can anyone raise your hand? You did?
I did not play.
Oh, no, but did you have a team that played?
Yeah, she was great, actually.
She was great? Who did that play? Do you remember what year?
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I'm doing class 2002, but I know Coach Holland, so, yes. It was when he was coaching.
I didn't have a team that played in the state finals. But when I was in seventh grade, I went to the Shoper Regional, and the boy soccer game in 1990 went to the state finals. They played Duxbury, they won 3-2, right? I didn't have any friends on the team. I didn't have any brothers or sisters on the team. Being one of those, part of the community, and I went and supported those kids. Just like I'll do for these kids, alright? Now here's the thing, listen, I'm so glad you read that email because if it was the band team at Symphony Hall, I would be there. If it was the drama team, the drama club that made it to the stage, I would be there. And if you look around, you can ask all these parents that are at the games, I'm at the games. I'm at the basketball games, I don't have a dog that plays basketball. I'm at the basketball games, I don't have a son that plays basketball. I'm at the field hockey games, I'm at the soccer games, at the boy soccer games, I go into all the games. Why? Because I'm a part of this community and I want change. What I've seen in the, I have an 11th grader and an 8th grader. What I've seen in the five years, we moved to town 17 years ago. In the last five or six years, we need change, right? And we have the opportunity to do that now, right? We have two, we have open positions coming up, we have rotating people onto school committee. Let's be the change, change for good, right? We're a community, we need to do it together now, and these kids deserve it. If, if, most people knew, and I know, the girl soccer team, the boy soccer team, they all put in a lot of work. If you know what the day looks like for some of these kids? It's wait room in the morning before school. It's school, and they all do really well at school, right? So take that off the table, it's not missing the school. They all do really well at school, right? Then it goes wait room at night, after everything's done for team, then you play a game, right? Then you have three days to get your body ready for another day of practice, right? Some of those days aren't pretty, right? You're not walking ready, you're not walking, right? You're banged up, you're bruised, you're cut, right? You, you need help, you need tubs, right? You need to get ready. These kids deserve our support, and they've put in the time, and now it's our turn to support them. We need to put in the time, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Alma, this is my twin brother. I'm speaking on behalf of the class of 2024. As you, a lot of you may know, our grade is on the, a lot of our grades on the Lions football team. We as a class want to support our friends, that we have spent so much time with these past years at Tohoto. While we know it isn't academics are important, this is pretty much a like once-in-a-lifetime experience. Our own players are playing at the Gillette Stadium. The same field that the Patriots play on, that's, that's pretty cool. So what we ask for is your support, whether it's a fan bus or a half-day, or just no penalization for whoever leaves during, during, during the day to go to the game. I went to a student council conference a couple of weeks ago, and a lot, most of the, most of it was about bringing more spirit into our schools after like we lost two years. It's a, we need more spirit, and I think whether, whether it's a concert or a field hockey game, this is a great start to shift back into a normal, preppy, peppy school. It's not just, it's, I mean, obviously it's about football, but it's bigger than that too. It's other kids looking up to these people and it's, yeah. Thank you.
There's nobody else on the list, though, anybody else like to say something?
Did you answer? I'm Jay O'Brien.
Yep.
I'm the only one with West Boylston on the team here. It's alright, not a lot of starters from West Boylston anyways, but it's alright. We got a lot of support from West Boylston already. A lot of our fans and our students come to the game, and that's because of the half-day. If we didn't have the half-day, we wouldn't have as many people coming as I know that there are. And to have double that amount with Tohoto support, that's even better. Like, we, small schools both ways, that's why we're co-op, so the more fans, the better. The support really does help, I know, I play on the team. So I know what it's like to have fans cheering you on, you make a big play. And when you make it this far to a stage like this at Gillette Stadium, it's, it's amazing, so. Having fans there to support you, more than ever, thank you.
Anybody else, final last call, two? Alright, we'll then move on to our discussion. Jeff, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, so when we look at these kind of decisions, we can really consider a couple of them, because in safety, spent all of my 30 years of teaching, as a teacher at the high school level. I can't tell you how many times I've seen kids late for something, going out hard enough, two years. And so the last thing we want is students rushing to rent and getting hurt because they're trying to get, try to claw or drive 30 minutes. So that's one thing we consider. The other thing we consider is whether we're doing something that's inclusive or not. And whether there's a question here of whether we're going to, we're going to release early if we're going to the elementary school. And I think we get sometimes the reason why we're leaving wasn't just that. Toddman touched on it, but also definitely realize that there are a lot of families who have students at the elementary school and then the middle school, and sometimes even at the high school. So, and also whether we're having people business. So teachers get attached to these kids, they work with them for a long time. And so they want, they want to participate in this event, which is true. So there are really three options that we consider, the high school. One was the excuse that, since those are logistical problems with that. There are things that are part of our concern, like how many lunches we put in for the day, how many votes come in, and really how the votes that we have to track down, particularly because of logistical problems. The other is the half-day, which requires a vote by the school committee. The reason it requires a vote by the school committee, because it's a half-day, and it would have to be made up. And then the third option was an early release, which doesn't require a vote by the school committee. And in that case, it would be early release for high school, and elementary school, and 12:00. And at that, in the elementary school, that is one thing. It doesn't require, the date isn't made up, doesn't require a vote, doesn't require any kind of calendar change. The lunch is for run, run as usual, the high school and the elementary school, so that isn't an issue. Some campuses, that is an issue, we have to consider. So maybe the high school and the trades have some flexibility, some maybe some extra time. So that's really the one we were considering the most because it gives the most amount of time in school and still gives the flexibility of getting to the event without rushing too much. The elementary school would run the after-school program, so most other families who use that, utilize the after-school program have date cave issues, so that will all be taken care of. So it's the one that makes sense the most, because if the school committee decides to, instead just call it a half-day, we can work on that also. But the one we recommend is the early release for the high school and the elementary school.
Jeff, sorry, I didn't realize half-days had to be made up. So if you have to make up a half-day, would you add a half-day on the calendar if we did vote a half-day? Okay.
Well, we'd have to schedule, we'd have to schedule the full day, but we made it up.
So we have to, so we'd have to schedule a full day, so add a day on for the school year?
We'd add a day on.
For teachers and students? And then we'd have to vote if we, we made that a half-day as well, or?
Yeah, I would, I would say, but it has a day.
As a day, yeah, I got it, okay.
You still have to get up and work, so.
And what's, yeah, and what's the, what's the time difference on an early, so a half-day, what is it, 11:45 at elementary? So you're talking 10:56, and early release, you said the earliest you can do without having to make it up would be?
Well, we decided, or we talked to the high school administration, 12:00 because we're going to lunch again, so they can get all our lunches done, they can play for that, so we don't have to worry about that.
So it's an hour and a half?
And then 11:30 at the elementary school, because they typically get up at 3:30. That's two and a half. And again, if somebody, you know, if somebody goes to be sensible and said, you know, early release and extra time to get there, it's, that's, that's fine, I'm sure they have the flexibility to, you know, somebody's behind watching.
So first of all, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Toddman said to the football team, congratulations, really. No matter how the game turns out on Friday, you should be very proud of yourselves, but we're looking forward to celebrating Friday. I also want to say congratulations to the students and the community in the school. As many emails came in, honestly, I felt proud of you all for pulling together and rallying around something that was important to you. Really nice to see. We've got brothers and sisters getting along. That's great. I, I want you to know that, I think I can probably speak for everybody here, that you have our unanimous support as a, as a team with your accomplishments. And I think the discussion really is, how do we, how do we facilitate this among the logistical challenges? It's the devil is always, that's kind of what Mr. Todd and Mr. Zanghi are capable of. So, you know, in discussions I've had with the other committee members, I can tell you that we support you 100%. That's not a question, it's just a matter of navigating the details and making this something that works out for everybody more. And hoping that we can, we can sort that out, right? A concern that I, I have also heard through contact with committee from elementary school parents specifically, is that, you know, there are some that are more removed from, from the athletics of Tohoto, right? As the administration from out there, yeah. And some of those parents do depend on, on their kids being in school, they have jobs. So my question to Mr. Zanghi, if you were to apply the after-school program instead of the early, when would that conclude that normal school dismissal?
No.
Or would it continue at the end of the after-school program?
It wouldn't be like a month, six months.
So coverage for parents, families?
Not at all. It's the ones who are in that coverage.
Do you have to be in the program to take part in it if they're not in the program?
Yeah, because there's a lot of paperwork and responsibility that person, so. As I said, most of the, most of the families who utilize that program, they do because they have issues. I mentioned that with the, with the elementary.
Can I ask a question? So is the point to moving several times at 12:30 to facilitate free lunches and not have to make up a day? So if?
Well, you have that covered here.
Oh, we have.
So that's that.
A lot of them depend on how much is.
So could the lunches be just launched earlier? I, I hold you to this.
We're just to be, to be clear, the, the elementary school children that are already enrolled in after-school have coverage, but those that aren't, which is the majority.
Only if we do an early release. My understanding is that if we, if we vote on a half-day, then no after-school, right Jeff?
We, we didn't check for the half-day and show we could, we could work on that. We did ask, we said this early release, so we're going to be able to make it. We could put the work on that. My guess is, that's a long time. That's a pretty long period.
Right, right, because it would be.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
Yeah, it would be 11:45. We knew it would be 11:45, it seems to say, or elementary, it would be 11:45.
Did we consider just reducing the time to keep the elementary school from those?
We did, but again, we don't get that to be so. Family just, if you don't want to school, whatever, change the elementary and high school. They might be going, their teachers could, like students from the elementary school, they may not be. So I think if you're going to do it, you're going to do it, so. We're talking about, we're talking about two hours, one day. If, if we were talking about acquiring some kind of state championship, I would have the exact same decision. I think if you have, if you have enough time, you get to go, get to the game. It gives the max all my time to, 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 to. And, and, yeah, and as I said, the high school administration has the flexibility. Somebody comes and says, you know, we need to give them extra time, they have to, they do that.
I want to answer a question too, so there's a lot of like penalization, and I understand like at the high school level, there's certain classes, you know, they've had a minister that, at the elementary school, like Chris Holmes said, I have a lot of communication concern about working parents trying to figure that out. And, and probably many do take care of, you know, use the after-school program, but many don't. So I guess at the elementary school level, I didn't think, or even at high school, like dismissal was not trapped like a tardy or a compensance or penalizes the same for dismissal. But I don't know if I was missing something or skipping around. So I guess if, if we were to separate the content of the middle school from the elementary schools for an early release, would, I don't understand if there'd be any penalization for someone to dismiss their child early from elementary school?
Uh, no, there wouldn't, there wouldn't, but you, you also run the problem, they could put in the lunches. All of that stuff, it doesn't depend on school. You don't know if it's going to get that much. It does give teachers the opportunity to go to, again, that's, you know, to get utilized for that. So, and I think that most parents, who kind of child, they have issues. You've not been, unless you're not a teacher, you're not getting a, a, a job. So I guess that's...
Some have a reason to work schedule is for nursing, except for free.
Yeah.
It's a way to create an opportunity for parents that do feel that they're still fine and are already pre-registered for after-school to, given those few days, to take advantage of it if they can.
I thought at B, I can only speak for BES, I don't know the whole school. I thought at BES, if you wanted to do after-school like for just a day, just, no. It was a morning, okay.
I think you could do that at BMS as well.
Jess just said it's morning, I think she's right, I think she's right. It's just the morning. Like you don't have to have a reservation, you can just show up in the ability at the end of the month. But they only do that for mornings. I guess you're right, after-school, you did have to register, you had to pick your days. Yep, 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 great, okay. Um, let me ask this question, kind of going along with what Jess was saying about credit. And like, so for these high school kids, do you do an early release? Like the players, I would assume they're going to have to leave, I don't know, at 10 o'clock in the morning. What time does the game start, two, three? Game starts at three, so these kids are going to have to leave, what time to get there? And, sorry.
You have a question there for a little?
Okay, so if we do an early release at 12, they're still all that have to get dismissed early, correct? Is that, what is that going to do with these kids? Are they going to be penalized because...
No, it doesn't affect that. I mean, they, they play sports, so they, they, it's like any other game, they have to wait, they have to go. It doesn't shock them, it doesn't affect the life. We're not, none of this does. We're going to have to have four days, four times a week.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is, families want to go.
So what if a student wants to leave, they, they all get out of school and then they can just go? That would plenty of time.
One minute?
Yeah, like, no, uh, high school, what time did you say high school gets out of school?
It would be 12:30.
No, 12:30.
No, for early release.
12:00.
For early release is 12:30. I'm just thinking if we...
You think regularly?
No, I mean, early release, like if you did this early release, I want, like, I get the point of not wanting to do the half day, right? Then everybody has to make up, including the teachers. So like, ten, maybe go to work day, there may be some teachers out there that are like, they're really terrible at football. So 12:30 will be enough time for high school, yeah.
Matt, can you weigh in on this? I don't think so, Ben.
No, I just want to make sure if we did do an early release, will the students in the school have enough time to get to the stadium?
Yes, 12:30, yes, we're going to have a bus here at 1:00 for the fans, you're going to have...
They eat their lunch, get on the bus, though.
Basically, yes. 12:30 will be the time. Yeah, I mean, the football team's going to be out whenever we have to get out. Whether that's 10, 10:30, 11. We've had games, we've had state games already, and we had 2:00. The reason this is an early game is because, so they get all the games in. Because of daylight savings with the soccer teams, if you feel like you can, we've had to go an hour and a half away. We had a two or 2:00 game and we had to get them outside 12:00. They're going to get towards Boylston, then they're going to go across Boylston to get to the game. So I mean, they're going to need this mess. But for, for the fans, anyone going for this game? Yes, we, we're going to have buses here for the fans that want to be here for 1:00. I don't think anyone wants to be there outside 12:00.
So maybe we could settle with that before we, before we came up with 12:30, 12:30. And yeah, we, we have, we have, we have, we have enough time for the game. And the opportunity to say that, so. I mean, you have the option. You don't have a day, you have to sort of, all your, if you don't have to.
I did not realize half days had to be made up. I thought when we put a half day on the calendar, it counted as a full day in the one on 86 or whatever the count is.
Yeah, in that case, it, it does in that case, but like, if you take a full day, you know, two and a half, it's like snow.
But if a half day on a school calendar...
Half day, you know.
No, I think she's just trying to understand if a half day counts as a full day.
Why does a full day count as a half day?
Yeah.
If it's a full day, why is it...
Well, it was shrinking it to the half, so if a half day counts...
It's a difference between schedule versus changing the schedule.
Because we're changing the schedule. Okay, yeah. Obviously, I know you don't make the rules, but I get it.
Oh, it's made by the state.
Yeah, no, I get it.
We have a comment down here as well.
Well, sorry, I just wanted to ask, so I know as a senior, we have some like senior privilege, where at the end of the day, through the study, we're allowed to, you know, leave early. And I was wondering if maybe that could be possible to do during the lunchbox? So if people had already had plans for lunch, if their families need to go like together, um, and they had, like, have a scheduling date, try to get into a pickup, or do err, or need to go to the game, would there be a way that we could have them bring in like permission notes beforehand? Mean like, I want to figure out my child's at that time, and then it'll be penalized for it, and they would be able to just miss that lunchbox?
We're talking about addition to the early release, so the early release, and then they can, yeah, that's, that's not a problem. So that's a question.
Okay, so that, that they're being able to have parents on the note, then they can come at time for this?
Yeah, they need that time.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's something to consider too, is to set, just going to get dismissed from the school despite their release because they're leaving to go to a brother or whatever. You know what I mean? So the front office has to be prepared for, who knows, coming dismissals or whatever. So with an effort to, based on one end, you know, create a disaster.
My recollection, like if you come for a stadium, the tenants, you have to be in the attention. If you're not, you're not... No, they said it on 12:30.
I couldn't hear that, you just need to comment.
My recollection of high school, you have to begin at like 10:56, whatever the half, half day would be to get the attendance for the day.
Is that true?
Yes, because I know these are the days, sorry.
Yes, yes, I mean, not, not for the...
Yes, perfect, but so that would be...
So here's the other thing, if we made, if we made it a half day and you have to make it a full day, why wouldn't you just cancel school that day? I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, if you have to make, if you have to, we're talking about hours here. It's like, what if, you just canceled school that day, like a snow day, and you made it up?
You can do that too.
Well, I'm just saying, if you have to make a full day to, to get a half day, you have to get, you have to make a full day. You don't have to, why would we go for the half day?
The recommendation is the early release.
Yeah, I get that.
So 12:30, 1:30, covers all those questions, covers all everything. Lunches, get the kids home, get the kids to after-school, they need it. So I, I think the recommendation is early release. Don't have to make it up in the future. Go have fun at the game, go win the game, eat lunch, get a fill-up for the game, get a proper load. So we could have it over now, uh, just to approve your early release, that's covered? Or someone like to make a difference?
So can I just ask a clarifying question? We keep saying early release, but we're talking 12:30 and 1:30. That's opposite of what, that's different from an early release, right? It's an earlier release. It was either an early release, which we would have to make up again.
Not a half day would have to be made up.
Right, but if you take the 12:30 and the 1:30, then it would be an early release, wouldn't have to make it up. Just want to clarify, hard to hear all of you.
What is that motion? I'll make that. So do I have a, a motion to approve the calendar change for early release on December 7th, 2022? Hope you get that, just, just a moment. I do want to just poke up the, the after-school program on that time. Can we commit to really exploring if you would create that as an option for families during the time? On short end of the...
All right, do you want to weigh in on that? Because I know there are a lot of penalties for students, so, you can talk about, but I know there's a lot of banning. Kids at school, something watching, so. We all love to talk about, you know, things, things, things. We can show you that, because they definitely know this has to be... And we get nothing out of that. But, you know, you have to be done, only have a student to teach. And you can...
A safe, not a safe position.
Yeah.
Because in staff, we look at, we see how many districts, the law, we look at, if people are really, even if you're keeping in the district, why decision?
I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's low than half a mile, that's just what it is, then it should be low than half a mile. Yes.
I think it is, oh, because we get that, you buy into the, you buy into the, you know, the rule that most of the parents they get the situation, but the children have to support them, and that's the kind of this one.
You guys can hear us.
Yeah, I, I don't think the, I don't think the solution is...
Any last questions? Any other comments from, from Kevin Salle? We don't need that.
I'm just trying to understand. I don't understand why we don't stick with the half day. The football players leaving at 11, everybody rows out, let's go. Let's do this as a community. Now they're going, and then maybe sisters are going, boyfriends and girlfriends, offices bombed with dismissals. I'm, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I need to have a discussion about this, not to be the dead horse.
Is it part of the elementary or high school?
Yeah, uh, no, I think the elementary school would be buying dismissals. Unless there's kids that have siblings that have... Yeah, but this is what I think would be, it's here at the school that is the issue. I think, you know, we're having this discussion, but we need to consider what is going to happen at elementary school. If we can't provide that care, then we have to either parents have to pivot, stink, again. It will happen when the example come to, right? I, I don't think it's enough to say we have to get lunches in. I don't want to go to the day, if we must deserve.
Well, I don't challenge on here, but there's something close to 20%. It's, I think relying on lunches.
Do that anyways on half day.
What's that?
Do that anyways on half day. Think they could take their lunches, what, Jeff, what happens on, what happens on a half day?
We don't have to vote on a half day for lunch.
Yeah, sure, if you can opt in on a half day for lunch, yeah. At any school, you would just miss your last period and you'd go eat your lunch. So regardless if it's a half day or a early release, if you need lunch, you get lunch.
I think the difference, I'm not sure about the like versus the 11:45 half day. Like that's, you're going to try to work a half day, that's... So I think, you know, the early release considers that.
Do you want to make a motion?
She needs some chair, okay, words here. I'd make a motion that we just keep it as a regular half day.
So did you quite happy?
Uh, yes, I, I, I think, yes, correct, thank you.
There's a motion?
I, yeah, the original, the original half day, so, yeah. And I'll second motion.
Yeah. Right, um, baby.
Hi.
Second is, uh, you want to discuss one?
You want?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Can you discuss?
Let's do it.
Just to clarify.
You have a question, let's just do it.
The, the difference here that we're moving on is, uh, schools get out, the elementarys are 11:45. It's 10:56 here at Tom. We think this will alleviate potentially some front office dynamics with dismissals. You just pull the Band-Aid off, whole district, let everybody go do what they want to do and support the team, right? Is after-school care still in place?
It said unsure, right?
Just in general, the, as it exists, as it exists now.
For a half day, you can still do half, if you do a half day, you can still do after-school.
They have an offer.
That's an offer. So you guys don't have a...
They can crush people.
And then the makeup day would have to be contracted, like, that's a contract thing.
I'm still trying to understand why a half day on a school calendar counts as a full day. If we turn a day into a half day, it has to be made up. Like, I just, I don't want it.
I'll give another true exception.
So why, why, why would there be a difference between the ability to provide after-school care on an early release day versus a half day?
Yeah, it's an hour and a half, talking an hour and a half. That's a discussion.
I mean, we just didn't check, I'm not saying we didn't, we just didn't check it out.
So that's a possibility of it.
Yeah.
Well, that's all right. It's sound back to versus for, um... Legislatively.
It opened in the PIS, well, we didn't check it out.
Let's show. He's accurate enough.
You've got...
Can I ask a little just a question about motions, I solved it. So the motion's on the table for a half day, right, Sam? Can another motion be made for another one, or does that mean an amendment to that motion?
You can amend, yeah. You can motion, just amend.
I'm voting for that.
Well, we can vote on this board.
I would like to put forth an amendment to the current motion to move it to the early release that was recommended. But 12:30 is one hour.
We need to amend it down. So if you want to take a motion for a half day?
That's sound.
Are you ready to vote on a motion for a half day? Are you ready for a vote on a motion at a half day? This other side? All favoring? Opposed?
I'd say it's a I, I'd say a I. I'd say a I as well.
Great, opposed? Jess? Your I? I have an I as well, so we have to address this.
All right.